...peoples and all those around this coast sailor sea that you see here today. So, welcome. Leave your Marcus imprint lightly. Enjoy the lands and let's have a great meeting. Que.
Thank you very much Valerie. It goes without saying that you are the very deserving recipient of the Red Braveman Award this year. So, thank you. It's an honor to have you here. Okay, folks, very quickly, a context of what, a context of why we're here. So, it turns out that many of us who've been here, I'm gonna date myself, have worked very hard on community-based research in Canada in HIV. I mean, it's not the only game in town, but we tried to establish that and we were able to convince many funders to help us with that and, you know, create specific pockets of money for that kind of work in HIV. So, over time, we feel that we've made a dent into old, let's demonize it a little bit, patriarchal, post-positivist ways of doing research in HIV and other chronic conditions in Canada. And then, all of a sudden, about, I don't know, almost five years ago now, then some of the funders, no funders will be named, just in case, they come up with this thing that seemed like a new thing, right? This new way of doing research, this new format, it was not so new. We kind of started clueing, but we, I was very intimidated by the language, it was program science. You've all dreamt of this, right? It's like, program science and start pushing, like, everybody has to do program science and then you have to, you know, apply for this. And what happened to some of us, and I hope I'm expressing the feelings of a number of folks, is we got a little bit nervous. So, what's gonna happen with our CBR staff? I felt personally, but that's just because I'm over 30 now, that I was yesterday's news. I was like, what happened with my CBR stuff? It's the only stuff that gave me credibility and it's gone. And so, with a group of folks who've been peer researchers, that is, people in with HIV or caregivers or allies, working as peer researchers, one or all the aspects of an HIV research or health research study, we started thinking, what's going on? They're displacing us, you know? I know, big words for the morning, right? We're feeling displaced and started looking at this kind of new, big machine that was walking in, program science and its subsidiaries, evaluation, implementation, and intervention science, and there's a bunch of others. I mean, if you read books, your eyes can just go like twirling because there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of talk and a lot of writing about it. It's all very important with lots of jargon. And so, we thought, how do we not lose the patient, and I put that in air quotes, in the community-based research principles? How do we not lose them and see where they fit, or make them fit, into program science? And this is why we're here today. And it says very gently, a patient takeover because we need to, we feel, we feel, I hope I'm expressing this correctly, we need to infiltrate lovingly, I would say penetrate, but that's just not the right word for the morning, infiltrate and make our space in program science and all these various kinds, right, of frameworks. And this is why we're here today, to tell you a little bit of what's going on with the folks who are experts in lived experience and professionalism around working with peer researchers and what they're doing in order to create and sustain a strong presence of people in with HIV, of people in with HIV in program science in Canada. And we hope that what we're doing here and what we've been doing before, we've been very, very lucky to have had the support of the Canadian Association for HIV Research and the Canadian Society for International Health and other funders to be here. So, we want to move this forward. We have great dreams, like having national standards, ideally some sort of national body, and by that I don't mean another kind of, I don't mean another kind of bureaucracy, but a body that can really look after peer researchers everywhere, not only when they're having a good time and implementing things, but also when they're having a bad time. And some of us researchers, so now I'm stepping to the other side, are not behaving, say, professionally or ethically, or we're not, you know, adhering to our study protocols and we're having some maybe negative impact on our peer researchers. So, we have big dreams also in terms of curriculum and things like that. And we've been developing with this, folks who are sitting here at the table, over time. So, now, you'll get to hear them for about five minutes. And in my, those of you who know me, some of you know me in the room, in my very tender and loving style, I'm gonna cut them off, possibly push them off the stage. They'll be fine. I'm sure the paramedic's waiting somewhere. If they go over the five minutes, it's not a promise, it's a threat. Oh, God. You'll be fine, you'll be fine, you're all loving. And so, they're gonna come one by one and then they're gonna sit here for this kind of weird public display, but then we're gonna ask them questions. I'm gonna ask you to hold off the questions for each individual presentation, just get the gist of it, take your notes, you know, start simmering on it if you like, if you hate or like what they're saying, and then you'll have, I promise you, the chance to ask questions. Is that okay, folks? You're all ready to go? It's a bit of a marathon, but peer researchers are used to doing everything, so we can do that. Okay. Our first presenter is James Watson. And folks, we're not gonna give, we're not gonna tell the story of each one of you, but, you know, whatever comes to my head. I consider James Watson one of the excellent peer researchers and trainers in Canada, and he's been around for a long time, although he's very young, and he's going to come here and present, and then you'll sit on one of those chairs. Come over. Come over. Oh, yeah. And thanks all of you for being here.
Thank you. This is, so I have no conflicts of interest to declare, apparently. Oh, it's very loud. All right. So, see if I can do this right. Wow. All right. So, you know, the HIV-CBR community has really led the way with patient engagement through peer researcher, through peer research, because unlike many other consumers or research communities, ours is grounded in an in-your-face kind of activism, an activism that demanded that people living with HIV be meaningfully engaged in the processes and systems that affect our futures. And for meaningful engagement came the rise of the peer researcher to where they become one of the most important engines and spirits of research across Canada, especially community-based research. They complement and complete the scientific research process, and we would not be where we are today without the peer researcher framework. So, it's an exciting time to be working with and as peer researchers. And I would like to speak to you today about a framework that Francisco and I have developed over the years of working with peer researchers. We've worked together for about 10 or 11 years, have trained and supported, you know, well over 100 peer researchers on numerous research initiatives, and our experiences have led us to develop this framework that helps guide how we work with peer researchers and moves JIPA, the greater involvement of people living with HIV, from theory into meaningful practice. It's been based on peer researcher expertise, the evaluations we take, key pieces of literature in the area, and meetings with leading CBR researchers in CBR. So, unsure whether the last thing is blank, but this is the framework. It has five broad components. The last one will be a surprise. So, administrative, educational, economic, emotional, methodological is the last one. So, if I can just touch on the administrative support for a moment. So, and this support is, this pillar of support is crucial, really, for the long-term health of any research project, but it can be challenging part of the process for anyone new to paperwork or documents or forms. So, you wanna provide simple and straightforward and easy-to-follow administrative processes. So, you want it to be simple. You want it to be flexible, understanding the administrative, understanding that administrative deadlines will be missed and documents will be filled out incorrectly at times. We honor the capacity-building process inherent in everything that we do. So, we help support peer researchers who might be unfamiliar with the more rigid framework of working with documentation. And we wanna maintain transparency about study administration. It helps to maintain the peer researcher insider status with the study team. Like anyone else, if you're privy to the process, you can be part of a solution. So, you also want to make sure that you have, you want a coordinator and a research team who are good communicators and can establish that kind of relationship with the peer researcher where they can talk about their lives, where they feel comfortable expressing themselves to the coordinator. So, if their feelings of being overwhelmed or under stress, that can be communicated. Oftentimes, the administrative, administrative pillar is like a bellwether of what can be happening in the future. If something's going wrong with your administration, it indicates that something might be wrong So, whipping to the educational support, I'm very well aware that I have five minutes, I have two minutes. Oh, dear. Okay. So, educational support, right? It operationalizes capacity building and can act as a catalyst for lifetime learning. We like to train peer researchers to the task and to the future, to the task, meaning the data collection, sort of the skills building, interviewing skills, and to the future with the softer skills like interpersonal communication, emotional self-awareness, organizational skills that help build leadership capacity. And we train through a blended learning approach, meaning online training combined with face-to-face training through universities without walls, and using modules to help support this learning, online modules. And they cover aspects such as self-care and interviewing skills and PRAs in community-based research. And the face-to-face training really solidifies the team. It's knowledge sharing, peer-to-peer sharing, where people living with HIV can share strategies for living with other people living with HIV. And we compensate PRAs for their learning time, right? Whether it's face-to-face or online or questionnaire consultations or refresher training, we always compensate. Their time has value. All right. That's, I feel like the one-minute signal coming soon. Economic support. So, lived experience, leadership commitment and participation must be compensated. There's not much more to say than that. Well, there's a lot more to say than that, but I don't have time to say more than that. So, let's go over to emotional debriefing support. So, you know, peer researchers, as many of us know, you know, the rewards of peer work are great, but the challenges are equally as great. The nature of this role means that people are often working in emotionally challenging situations, and the cumulative impact of each interview can be a burden as they sometimes will hear their own story reflected back to them many times over. So, being able to recognize and understand one's own emotions are, is key. And we are committed to continuing to develop and support ongoing practical self-care strategies and formal and informal supports. We've done a lot of work with the AIDS Bereavement and Resiliency Program of Ontario and Ana Dimakshala Koppales, who will be speaking to us today, you know, around, around developing these practical strategies and working with emotional first aid. And I think, well, she'll explain later, but she's really built up a lot of resiliency in the province where we have been able to pull a lot of talented peer researchers from that network. And methodological support, the final one. So, this pillar really lays the groundwork for all other support pillars. This is where we make room for meaningful collaboration. We choose methodologies that take into account community strengths and skills. We design and implement and evaluate and report on the research processes in ways that take peer researchers into full consideration. And we allow for meaningful opportunities to collaborate and break down the hierarchy between coordinators, peer researchers, you know, have opportunities to participate as co-PIs and knowledge users and prepare people for governance and dissemination and analysis. Ah, so, I am done. That's it. It's been a treat. Thank you.
Okay. We keep it. So, we're gonna hear examples about these different things because I'm sure they're calling your attention, and we'll make available the slides for those of you who wanna have them later, and you can find them at universities without walls.ca. So, that's W-W-W-U-W-O dot C-A, I think. Play with your talking machines, you'll find it. Okay. Next person. Ryan, I don't know a whole lot about you, and it's a pleasure to meet you for the first time. You're from UBC, aren't you? Okay. I said to Ryan, this is the terrible thing to say in the morning, I said, you're very young, but the fact is, I'm very old. So, here's Ryan to talk about his project.
So, I'm terrified of being pushed off the stage, so I'm gonna set a timer first. Great, thank you. So, I'm gonna talk a bit about a larger program of research that we operate out of the B.C. Centre on Substance Use, where I lead our qualitative and community-based research program, which has a huge focus on implementation and program science and seeks to equitably involve people who use drugs throughout our work and specifically in relation to the evaluation of interventions. And this work has really been informed by an article we published last year in Social Science and Medicine that really looked at community-based research in the downtown east side, the pitfalls, the challenges and the opportunities, particularly as it relates to the emancipatory involvement of people who use drugs and their empowerment throughout the research process. And yet, this work really pointed to the fact that, in many cases, while community-based research is a set of practices, it's not always that meaningful for folks. It can be exploitive, it can be problematic, and most importantly, it's often not done in a sustainable manner. So, based on that work, we sought to really reform our program, and this was particularly important in recognizing our positionality where it's critical to provide opportunities for the voices of people who use drugs to inform our work, in part because, you know, I'm not someone who uses drugs. I'm white, I'm a straight dude. Like, how I understand research isn't necessarily ever going to be representative in a meaningful way, and therefore, providing opportunities for meaningful engagement throughout the research process, and in particular, in informing the direction of the work as a whole, is So, what this has really involved is efforts to reform our broader program of research to have a sustainable model of peer engagement by involving people across the network of studies that we operate, which range from work focused on the implementation of HIV-related treatment and prevention programs, interventions related to the overdose crisis, on through really taking a deep dive and understanding what's happening in housing in the downtown east side in particular. And underlying that has been an emphasis on supporting peers through capacity development and through opportunities to be engaged in work as peer researchers, but more importantly, doing so in a way that allows them to define the parameters of their work and work with us to define how they're involved. So, for example, we use a low-threshold hiring process to allow people to become engaged with our group in a way that is accessible as possible and ensures that peers, no matter what their set of abilities are, can access these opportunities and become engaged in the research process. It means providing opportunities for people to be involved in setting the direction of work, identifying research objectives, particularly as it relates to program implementation, because people often understand the logics of implementation in very specific ways and can make incredible contributions to the work. And in particular, this is seen most in our work around the overdose crisis, where we're doing recruitment in real time, in real-world settings, and it's not always appropriate for me to be sitting there as a researcher actively recruiting people out of an overdose prevention site, whereas our peers can integrate into an environment that adds comfort, not just for the participants, but ensures that it's as minimally disruptive as possible. So, alongside all of this work, need be that commitment to capacity development and skills building for peer researchers, which is something that we integrate into all of the work that they do. So, for example, of the set hours that a peer works for us as part of our program, so as to provide opportunities for them to grow, contribute, et cetera, we build in dedicated time for training opportunities and for them to develop skills that they need to make still greater contributions to our work. And that's particularly critical so as to ensure that their involvement itself can be sustainable and brackets out time for self-care discussions in relation to the work itself. And yet, as we work to reform the system and this program of research, you know, there nonetheless remain a series of impediments to doing so in a fully sustainable way, not the least of which is the fact that there's just not enough funding, either as part of individual grants or more generally and programmatically, to support peers in a meaningful way. We're carving money off grants to provide RA positions for our peers, and yet, without programmatic support so as to make their training sustainable and to provide opportunities more generally, we risk not being sustainable and providing longer-term opportunities even as we actively work to promote that within our work. But beyond that, the whole of systems aren't set up for community-based research in a meaningful way, particularly in relation to work in the downtown east side, where certainly, and that's my timer. So, on that point, I will wrap up and say that beyond that, there need be reforms across university systems and other academic institutions so as to support meaningful engagement and, more importantly, oversight by communities of the research process. If community-based research is a continuum of practices, some of which can be problematic, let's address that. And you can really only address that by direct community oversight, including in the research ethics process, so as to ensure that work can be meaningful and that researchers are held accountable for having engagement and action plans. Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you very much. One of the things that I will ask you, and I'm sure it's an delicate question, which apparently I'm very good at, is what happens when you're working with people, the former or current experience living, I'm not, you don't have to answer now, think about it. Former or current experience using drugs when they are under the influence, I don't know how else to say it. So, it'll be interesting to hear what happens, how do you work with that? Anyway, so, Ryan, lovely meeting you. We do have some points of common. I didn't know, coincidentally, I'm a person who doesn't use drugs, I'm straight, and I'm white. So, we have things in common. That's pretty good. So, two powerhouses are coming up, and powerhouses because they're brilliant and they've done a lot of work in this area, so Valerie Nicholson and Cian Wilson. I never stop plugging in the Universities Without Walls, but Cian Wilson's one of our alumni, and we're super proud of the amazing career she's leading. Now, please come up, ladies. And you sit there and be good.
So, I think I'll start by just letting everyone know that we're here, or at least I'm here, presenting on part of Zach Marshall, who is the lead on this larger project that we're gonna sort of lay out for you, give some context and some lived experience examples of. Valerie, you wanna stand next to me? Not behind me. I wanna, I wanna come and see you.
I just don't wanna fall off the stage.
So, I guess we'll pull up the slides for this. All right, perfect. All right. So, public participation in research is increasingly emphasized by governments, funders, researchers and communities themselves. And so, for me, it's also thinking about the larger political and funding impetus for some of this work, that contextualizes a lot of this work. In community-based research, people with lived experience of HIV, substance use and other forms of marginalization, as has been mentioned, become a key part of study teams or peer researchers. Despite the rise in patient and public participation, we know little about labor and employment practices in this evolving and continuously evolving labor, or field of labor, I should say. Our team came together, and there was about 40 of us in the room, I feel, it was quite a bit of us, to start to explore these ideas. And our team includes researchers from areas of community-based research and HIV, Indigenous CBR stream, citizen science and patient-oriented research, so across different, different fields of engagement with, with peer researchers. So, this, I don't know if you all can see the, any of the words here, but this is a job ad for a peer job ad. And so, what you'll sort of notice is the eligibility criteria obviously being a peer, and it looks for things like being open to learning new things, having really basic skills, being really interested in engagement in some capacity. And I want us to think about this for a little bit, because it's gonna come, come up in terms of some of the questions that I have around this sort of makeshift economy that we've established around peer engagement, where, you know, much like what Ryan acknowledged and highlighted, we have to think really seriously about sustainability, right, in terms of these positions and these, and these jobs, and how are we building transferable skills, for example, or building skills that allow folks to work and use their experiences beyond, you know, research, which, you know, often projects have a time life, as Ryan was highlighting. And so, some of the questions, you know, that have come up, you know, amongst our team, and some of the things that I'm thinking quite a bit about is, you know, the enterprise of research, you know, this, this idea that, you know, that we've created these research projects, are they sustainable? Who benefits from these research projects? Whose careers are built from these research projects? And, you know, who are, who's constantly in this cycle of relying on research projects to sort of get an additional, you know, income or sustain their livelihoods, you know? And so, really thinking about all of these different kinds of dynamics that exist within the current structures that we, that we have. And so, some of the questions that you see here are, what are my future job options? Big questions for, for PRAs. Is this a dead-end job? Am I being exploited? What does peer research really mean? What is it really about? Who does it really benefit? Okay? And so, really thinking about that. And so, this is a chart paper that sort of exemplifies some of our brainstorming that we had in our first team meeting. And a result of this, as a result of this brainstorming session, we discussed the enterprise of research and how an understanding of the purpose of research and who benefits from research is not really at the crux of framing this work that we do. Even relationships, which are so central to Indigenous practice and worldview, is not something that is valued in the work, because if we truly valued relationships and truly valued this, you know, again, the livelihood and outcomes of our PRAs, we would think seriously about what it is that we are establishing around them in terms of ensuring that these skills can be taken in a different context, ensuring that they're, you know, transferable, ensuring that there's gainful employment from these, these processes. So, really thinking about this makeshift economy again that we've created is what I really want us to come back to. So, this is a little bit about the project. This is a few of the members of our team. Our team, as I said, as I mentioned, was about 40-strong. So, you've got a little bit of our team here from the Participatory Research Employment Outcomes Project, again, led by Zach Marshall, who's a part of the larger REACH teams. You can see some of us there. And some of the objectives here for the larger project, so building a multidisciplinary team, as I mentioned, from folks from different fields, to investigate the emerging area of participatory employment across different fields of participatory research, to explore how community researchers describe their employment experiences, develop a typology of participatory employment. And what I think is really exciting about this project is we're looking across fields. It's not just in HIV, we're looking in different sectors as well, such, you know, where there's different terminology like citizen science that's used to describe peer researchers, and really exploring what's, you know, happening in this, this, you know, sort of sector or this late field of labor. Describing human resources, practices and policies, identify current and emerging models of participatory employment, such as social enterprises, and selecting outcomes of interest to community researchers and other stakeholders. So, really thinking about all of these questions is what this project is really focused on. So, I'm gonna pass the reins now over to Valerie, who's gonna talk about some of her lived experience working in cooperatives.
Thank you. So, we decided to look at cooperatives. And cooperatives are people who own it. They have an equal voice, and there's equitable. So I was lucky enough that I had started a co-op. So Harvest Co-op is an organic fruit and vegetable co-op. So Michael and I decided to take a course, or I met him at this course, which is Community Capacity Building, where you had to seek out a need in your community. We saw a need that people living with HIV needed organic fruits and vegetables at a reasonable cost. But we didn't know how to come about it. We were a small organization. So we decided to become a co-op where we all became members. We all pooled our money together and I'm happy to say that Harvest Co-op is open at two sites and is still going strong. So why a cooperative? So community researchers are getting work on case-by-case basis and as individuals. So if I get a job and my partner, a friend of mine gets a job, neither of us know about each other or how much we're getting paid. She may be getting paid in gift cards, I may be getting cash under the table. We have peers that are living on long-term disability. They can only make so much a month. So how do we pay them? We become part-time or full-time employees. So if people are living on disability or insurance, if you're getting part-time work and if you get full-time and then you have to go off your insurance, what happens then when this peer research ends? So we become self-employed individuals where we're entering into agreement with big institutions, which for some, that is quite a big step and not understanding. And again, we're still working as individuals and we're not talking to each other and we don't know what is happening with our labor challenges. If we became a cooperative or a social enterprise, we could come together. We could be coming to a group and we could discuss this and set standards. This has the potential to improve all our employment equity and to lead better working conditions for all those that are peer researchers. I know I have very little time left. So community researchers, we'd be sitting at the table as equals. We'd be sitting in a circle and we'd all have an equal voice. We'd be able to say that we could be organized in all the different cities, but we could also be a national organization and speaking from coast to coast. So there are two sites there where you could learn more about working cooperatives. And if you're interested, please get in touch with us. And thank you, Zach, for leading this.
Thanks so much. And I think what's really amazing about, you know, the angle of including cooperatives is that this work has been done in communities before, but something happens when we add research to the mix, right? Something gets lost, something changes and shifts in terms of power dynamics and what the intention is behind these projects. So thinking about that really strategically and hopefully that will launch into that discussion after. Thanks.
Okay. So a couple of things that I'm sure are making some of, if any, program science folks and intervention implementation folks are trembling on their edible undies are things like, you know, cooperatives. I don't know, edible undies seems like the right thing at this time of the morning. No side commentary, Darren. Citizen science, we're gonna ask you about that. Makeshift economy, we're gonna ask you about cooperatives more in this parallel, this idea of a social enterprise. Okay, folks, coming up, a wonderful friend of mine, I've worked with her for many years since I, before I left Vancouver, Jenny's daddy from the Pacific Eight Network, come over, please. She's gonna be talking to us about the PLDI. We had a wonderful time filming. She's gonna be on an educational module for Universities Without Walls coming up pretty soon. So we did that at Friends for Life.
Thank you, Francisco. I'm also gonna start my timer because I know... So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge the unceded coast Salish Territories, which we're meeting on today. I'm very grateful for being able to be here today. I'm here to talk to you about a program, an evaluation that we did with a very important program here in BC called the Positive Leadership Development Institute. And I also really wanna acknowledge the many PLDI grads, trainers, staff and leaders that are in BC and in the room today. And I really hope that I do a good job about talking about this project. So the PLDI impact evaluation was actually using evaluation, a program science and intervention implementation science tool, and putting it into use in a new way, so... Sorry, I don't know. I just pressed... Oh. I don't know how the tech works. My time is up. Okay. Yeah. Francisco. Anyways, I can... Okay, the green button. Okay. The Positive Leadership Development Institute is a program in BC and it started in Ontario but then came to BC. It supports people living with HIV to realize their leadership potential and to increase capacity to participate meaningfully in community life. So it's a leadership training program that consists of three core leadership courses. So there's the core leadership training, there's a course called Board, Get On Board, around governance, and a communication skills training. So we were working with the team at PAN and we'd realized that we had come to a point where it'd be really important to actually start to think about the impacts that PLDI has had in BC. So there had been over 20 trainings, over 160 participants that had gone through the trainings and had been running for over seven years. So the team at PAN decided that they wanted to do an impact evaluation and they kind of brought me into the fold to kind of think through that process. So I was very honored to come and join and to think about this evaluation process. So we decided that we would do a very participatory process. Given kind of the nature of PLDI and its strong leadership focus, we decided a highly participatory process would be the best way to go for this evaluation. So we searched the evaluation literature. We searched high and low for models that we might wanna use that would be very highly participatory and work in a way that would make sense for PLDI and for PAN. But we didn't find anything. We didn't find something that really fit really well. So instead, we pulled on our long history of doing community-based research and working with peer researchers and peer research associates, and we worked to adapt this within an evaluation And so to say that, so we developed this evaluation framework that actually brought on people with lived experience at all steps along the way. So we had people with lived experience on the Evaluation Steering Committee that really governed and led the project and made key decisions around the project. And we also brought on a team of four peer evaluators. So what is a peer evaluator? So this is kind of a new idea that we kind of thought through and kind of helped develop in form. So for us, peer evaluators were people living with HIV who had an interest in gaining leadership skills around evaluation. So we hired and brought on to the team, we brought on four peer evaluators. So two had participated in PLDI and two had not. None of our peer evaluators had had a lot of experience with evaluation previously. So we thought that we needed to wrap around some training and capacity building supports around that position. So we actually worked to develop a peer evaluator training manual, which is up on both the PAN and the REACH websites. You can go there and use it and take a look at that. And so we did training and just-in-time training. So we did some manual and training and then we got, people put them right into use right away. So we learnt about logic models and then folks built a logic model. And it was an interesting way of working. So being PAN and being evaluation nerds, we decided that we would evaluate our evaluation so because this is a brand-new way of working. And there wasn't a lot of evidence in the evaluation field about this highly participatory way of working. We decided that we would take a deeper look and see what we learnt about working this way. So we did learn that peer evaluators provide really great richness and insight and a range of perspectives that contributed immensely to the evaluation. But this way of working does take significantly more time and resources that need to be built in from the start. So it's really something you have to carefully think about, whether it's appropriate and to plan for, and to make sure that you have the right training tools, budget for honorary and compensation, and staff to support and coach folks along the way. There you go.
Thank you. And there's some method to our madness. The idea is that you, we, you know, get you so interested that you come up to these folks later and talk to them specifically about, you know, the needy-greedy, the ins and outs of their projects. And I know they're highlighting, we're all very good and they're highlighting all the good things, but I'm sure there's been some drama that we'd like to know about. But that you will find out from them individually. There's been some drama, hasn't there? All right, folks. So moving right along, another alumni of Universities Without Walls, the magnificent Sarah Chan, who's the Executive Director of YouthCo here in Vancouver.
My organization, YouthCo, accepts money from various pharmaceutical companies to run our programs and support our organizational needs. We also accept money from individual donors at www.youthco.org/donate. Thank you. As Francisco said, my name is Sarah and I am a settler on this land that has not been ceded by the local nations, the Musqueam, Tsleil-Waututh and Squamish peoples. Right now, I work alongside amazing young people at YouthCo and today, I'm sharing our experience of using program science within one of our programs, Yosnoas. This is a word in the language of one of the Indigenous nations on whose unceded land we are today, the Squamish people. It was given to our team in conversation with the local nation and it means taking care of each other. This program is led by Indigenous youth and operates with a lot of autonomy within our programs at YouthCo, intentionally so as part of our commitment to decolonization and anti-oppression. The educators on the Yosnoas team spend a week in up to 15 communities each year outside the Vancouver area, facilitating conversations about stigma, HIV, Hep C, harm reduction and sexual health from an Indigenous perspective. I'm here without a member of the Yosnoas team this morning because A, it's very early and B, they got in late last night from a community in BC's interior. These workshops engage with the everyday realities of colonization that Indigenous youth face as they navigate conversations about sex and drugs. Currently, there's three educators on this team and all of these young people come to work every day with the goal of supporting Indigenous youth. This support happens in the context of injustices in the cases of Colton Bouchi and Tina Fontaine, a pipeline debate that exposes Canada's continued disregard for Indigenous land, acute and unmet mental health needs of Indigenous people living in urban and remote areas across BC, and the reality of sex, drugs and pleasure. Over the 10-year experience of this program, even as HIV science has changed, the value and need for culture in peer education and peer support has remained. And over these 10 years, the base of Western science that validates this experience has grown too. Yet, we continue to struggle to get the resources we need to run a program called Culture is Healing. This is the approach that Indigenous youth tell us they need to engage young people in conversations about HIV, whether or not they are living with HIV. The Culture is Healing events that we're able to do in this program science funding with the University Without Walls is a culture-first program that involves one or two hours of beating or making drums, cedar, medicine-making, all led by Indigenous people. That allows Indigenous youth to build relationships with each other and create a space and to unpack realities that shape sex and drugs. Every time we held these events, it's clear that youth want much more than what we're able to do. So we embarked on our program science journey with this shared problem. How do we convince a program funder, any program funder, that Culture is Healing helps meet our work plan objectives around HIV and harm reduction? More so than any research project I have worked on before, this starting point for our grant proposal was truly community-led. Our Yosnoas educators, as part of their paid work, were encountering and thinking about these challenges and coming into grant opportunities to change that. With that in mind, it does need saying that our question is emerging in the context of scarcity, at a time when there is a huge focus on quantifying outcomes and at a time when we have the research evidence that says access to culture is a determinant of health and this in and of itself is a problematic structure in which we're trying to resource our programs. This is juxtaposed with the promise of reconciliation and support for Indigenous leadership and it needs saying that this system is in and of itself perpetuating colonial ideas about knowledge and resource deployment and that this system needs to change. In this context, Yosnoas educators are peer researchers. Together, the team and I are working on creative practical approaches to program evaluation that show long-term impact of these programs without causing harm to the Indigenous youth we work with and without disrupting the peer relationships we're invested in creating. Research is about power too. A not reciprocal ask for some youth to share how many times they've had sex with or without condoms, and how to explain the youth who participate in our programs but opt out of this program evaluation and research activities, and how to show our funders through art or photographs and all of the impact that we're having without appropriating Indigenous culture. These are the questions we're grappling with. In our project, we aren't using the term peer researcher, but in practice, we can think about the team that way. I have a graduate degree in public health and I'm a part of many research teams and I'm not a peer. My coworkers are peers to the youth we are working with and have less education and research training than I do. Some of the ways we are working to support this peer research teams includes a fairly flat compensation structure, access to benefits, a structured wellness plan and peer support within and beyond the team. We also acknowledge the challenges of the system we're working in and validate for peers and myself how challenging and frustrating it is to capture what we do in meaningful ways. I just have three more sentences, Francisco. Throughout the program, the Yosnoas educators have had conversations with participants after each session that have shown just how much of an impact this program has had. And so together, we've decided to find a way to systematize and document these conversations and to explicitly invite all youth to participate. We've convinced our funder, our major funder, and we're so excited about this outcome, that by hosting talking circles and focus groups led by the Yosnoas team with traditional food and culture that ask youths to reflect on their experience of the program, we're able to understand the long-term impact of that and meet our program evaluation requirements. So we're able to provide honor air to the youth who participate and support the team of youth who lead this program every day and we really appreciate the funding from UWW in order to do that.
It's a marathon. So interesting thing, so we'll have to probably hear a little bit more of what pleasure, art and photograph and arts-based things have to do with something as serious and important as program science? Like what, is there a space for that kind of, you know, thing there? Okay. So shameless plug, so Universities Without Walls has an online course for anyone in Canada offered through the University of Ontario Institute of Technology. Again, thanks to our funders, yes. Starting on May the 7th and ending on June the 22nd, most of the classes, most of the stuff is done with materials that we've created with our excellent folks across Canada. So go to Universities Without Walls, there are five scholarships available for folks. The wise cost is quite minimal, is $139 per person. So your organization maybe can fund you. Okay. Next. Anna. Anna, I live in Greek towns, so I should be able to do this. The Metrakopolis? Fair enough. Thank you. And I'm so glad that I've gotten to know you a bit more this year and she's been doing amazing work as part of a study that is included in the HIV Stigma Index. And please come up here, so Anna will be talking about us, about us, no, about turning to one another for peer engagement. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. And I just wanna say that I'm already so inspired by all the exciting projects that I don't hear about, you know, in my own little silo. I was like, I wish I was spending the whole day talking to all these people because I think there would be lots to learn. Anyway, so that's a nice way to start a morning. It made it worthwhile to get up so early. Okay, so I filled in my little slide there that I have no conflicts of interest to disclose. Uh-oh. Oh, I see how this thing happened where you hit that button. It's because it's in the wrong position. So now go back to this, there, okay. It's the button to the right, so you automatically press it. Okay, so the Turning to One Another Peer Engagement Network has been a very long, slow build in Ontario that was originally inspired... Oh, I see how this thing happened where you hit that button, it's because it's in the wrong position, so now go back to this, there, okay. It's the button to the right, so you automatically press it. Okay, so the Turning to One Another Peer Engagement Network has been a very long, slow build in Ontario that was originally inspired through a very strong commitment to JIPA-MIPA, but translating that belief that, oh, we're supposed to be restructuring the way that we do things, and then merging it with, and wait a minute, how do people's actual needs get met anyway? So I think the connection into Program Science is, how do you actually do what you say you're going to do, instead of going through the motions and following models of organizational structure and program delivery that come from a mainstream social service model but aren't actually informed by the real-life experience of people? And so I think that social innovation is one of the key concepts that is very necessary to have as a part of doing HIV/AIDS work and has expanded into doing peer work. So these slides are going to give you a little bit of the methodology that we've used, but I'm very happy to hear about the way that what we've done over the past 10 years corresponds to this emerging pillar about, you know, peer researcher support, which is the absolutely essential nature of collaboration. And inherent in that isn't just that people are involved, but it's that people are involved in generating knowledge and practices together, because where is the source of information? The source of the information on how to meet people's needs is in the people who have lived experience. And I think that's evolving the discussion and just taking this a little bit farther of where does effective practice emerge from? So this is the process that we've used, that we, like I said, were committed around JIPA, and then once we understood that people were going to be engaged in organizations, we realized then the organizational culture of ASOs in Ontario needed to shift. And that meant helping to create new job descriptions, the language shifting from client services into peer engagement worker, huge shift. So when TTOA began, there were about three people in the province of Ontario who had peer engagement as part of their job title, and our network met in the end of February, and there were 24 people who had peer engagement worker as part of their job title. So it's helping meaningful organizational change. And so the members who have been a part of this collaborative work are all over Ontario, different types of organizations in many different types of environments. But the understanding that is helping people actually participate is connected to this concept of the community of practice, which again, is a very different way of understanding where does knowledge come from, and then how are people motivated to be learning together, reflecting on what works for them, and then immediately applying it into the practices of their organizations? And so local peer engagement groups work with templates of information and help to co-generate resources. We create something, a worksheet or something, and then send it out as a Word file, and then a local group will modify it so that it has their language, has images, or it connects into other projects that they've done. So we have found that the community practice model is the best way to support ongoing collaborative work. So the main thing that has been generated that has become a crossover into supporting peer researchers is this particular tool. And so we call it now the ETSS, because, you know, the whole thing of acronyms in this movement, right? So Essential Tools for Support and Stability, which is a distillation of work that's part of our training process, that's a two-and-a-half-day module, one of three, that works with how, what kind of debriefing supports do people need, and how can people have increased skills around self-awareness so that when they are engaged as a peer in community, that they regularly have access to support to reflect on what's that impact doing to them and what kind of other supports do they need? And so there are specific tools that you'll see there about using emotional first aid, which is what James made reference to. And when we say practice debriefing, we don't just mean have one experience, we mean let's have a framework, let's have enough of a sense of people's entitlement to what is an effective debriefing conversation, because it's a unique experience for each person, and those decisions about who should I be debriefing with need to be made on a very personal basis. And so people build up that sense of skills and practices in their local context with what works for them. And that process, we have found through the many people who have been engaged over the past many years, that the evolution takes on its own short-form language, which is part of what takes, that makes it different from, oh, it's a piece of paper, it's a protocol we're following, into it overlaps into people's personal reality and within their network and within the organizational culture of their home community. And that's how we know that the transfer of skills is actually effective, because people actually do it and use the language with themselves and each other. So we are, I think my time, we are doing a current research project now. So this is a thing about the social innovation at a community level. We have developed the tool, it has been very successful, it has been modified many times over the years based on the input of the peers, and now finally, in partnership with the UWW process and REACH, we are able to be disseminating those tools, more specifically within the peer researcher network, and actually doing a structured process to evaluate the effectiveness of it, and we're happy to be participating as part of the stigma study to do that.
Okay, folks, I remind you, these folks are free, you need to come and talk to them after. They all teach, they all produce stuff, they produce videos, they produce brochures, their output is amazing, and I mean it. So the mothership just came to me and told me that if you do not fill out your evaluation forms positively, say good things, they're not going to give us a cent more. So we're asking you, this is important work, fill out those evaluations now. You know, you don't have to put your name, say nice things. Okay, next, this amazing woman I've had the chance to work with, and she is the star of, by the way, we do have a module, an e-module that is available to all of you in Universities Without Walls about self-care, and we have one that is starred by Doris Pelletier on storytelling circles as indigenous methodology. So I recommend that you review, she looks fantastic, she's great, and now she's coming to talk with us about Visioning Health 2.
Thank you, Francis, Francisco. I didn't prepare any slides, but I just want to touch on two points with regards to our study, just covered two areas. So I'm with the Visioning Health 2 study. The first iteration of Visioning Health 2 was Visioning Health 1, hence why we call this one 2. And it was about research. Visioning Health 1 was about research that felt like a program, and it was the process of how we did the research that we got this really good feedback. And quite often, women that were participating in the first iteration of Visioning Health would tell us, oh, this is a really good program, and we would remind them, this is not a program, this is research. So hence, it kind of opened the door to Visioning Health 2, which is a multi-site study. We've got eight sites across the country that we're going to be conducting what's called an intervention. There is some resistance to that word, because it's such a Western concept when you think about intervention research, and each time in meetings when we talk about it, people will say, intervention, I'm not really crazy about that word. And so I just want to tell you a little bit about the meaningful engagement of women living with HIV-positive indigenous women in our research process. From Visioning Health 1, the women that participated in those first three small sites are now stepping into the roles of community research coordinator in Visioning Health 2. So there is a bridge that we built at their request from the first iteration into this new one that we're currently doing. And so they were part of the project design, and in terms of when we submitted our submission to CIHR, they helped with the project design, but the project design has been much the same. The only thing that we incorporated were measurements, because we're now evaluating the impact of Visioning Health as a program. And so that's what we're doing. And so we're creating opportunities by building that bridge from Visioning Health 1 to Visioning Health 2 and engaging women that participated in the first study, the first research project. We've created space for women to take these roles. We also establish a women's council comprised of the women from Visioning Health 1 study, and so they guide our study currently. And so when I talk about meaningful engagement of women living with HIV, quite often I'll say, this is meaningful engagement of women living with HIV in research. And what does that look like? So we have women stepping in as community research coordinators, and they're charged with leading the way within their site, within the region. So we create these regional teams in each of the sites and do teams' training, and there's self-determination is honored in that role, and they get to choose the knowledge keeper that they'll work with in each of the sites, because we are culturally grounded when we do the work with the women on the ground, and it's, so there's a lot of self-determination in there. And the Women's Council meets six times a year as well to continue to guide us over the course of the four years of the study. Actually, we're going to go into a fifth year with our study, because we're finding that it's going to be a lot of work. So we also engage women in the analysis piece as well, in the preliminary analysis that's done by the women, and the coding is done by the women. But I want to take you back to the community research coordinator. They're partnered with a community partner on the ground, and it's really important when you have multi-sites that you have a really good community partner to work with that's supportive of community research coordinators and peer engagement in research processes. So much of our community partners from our first three sites, they're very supportive. They supported JIPA, and they supported the self-determination of these women that were stepping into these roles as community research coordinators. They also oversee some of the data collection as well. So they're engaged in conducting all the data collection, and we've got a tremendous amount of forms that the community research coordinators have to work with, and I really hear James when he talks about the administrative support, that's so important, particularly for people that are involved also in the data collection and in the recruitment. And so we've got all these forms that the women work with, from the screening form to the demographics form, and then we have a wellness survey, and then they also do the sharing circles, they lead the sharing circles where qualitative data is collected to respond to the four questions of Visioning Health. And the last thing I want to say is indigenous women have been researched, and most of the research has focused on our deficits. I'm an HIV-positive indigenous woman, and much of the research that's been done previous to maybe the last less than 10 years, there's been a shift in terms of the kind of research that we want done, that we want to be engaged in, and it's shifting that narrative from that collection of pathogenic kind of research that focuses on illness and it's illness-based research. So the increasing involvement of women, indigenous women living with HIV in the research process, we've reached that place now in our process with Visioning Health where the women, we recognize, we're co-creators of new knowledge, because we're shifting that narrative from pathogenic research to more of a strengths-based research. And so at every entry point in our process, the women are providing that knowledge, and I acknowledge all of them that have worked with us over the years. Migoetch.
Thank you, Doris. So there's a tremendous amount of positive pride in this stage, and I hope you're not shy. Don't be shy, I know, they're peer researchers, one day you'll be working with them. So just come in and fill out forms and say good things. Okay, last but not least, and then you'll have very pointed questions to ask these folks, and if you feel tempted to give a speech, you won't, because you just ask a question, they'll give you a straight answer or a gaily forward answer. Okay, Terry Howard is a dear friend of mine, we started working here about more than 15 years ago, and in downtown Eastside, come over, please, and he's going to talk about participatory approach to preventing HIV, HCV, and STBBIs in federally incarcerated men in BC.
Thank you, Francisco. And I'm not sure why I didn't make it onto the slide, I think it's probably because Anna and Francisco's names are so long I didn't actually make it, but I assure you, I was invited, I'm not just crashing this presentation. Our working title to our project that I'm presenting today is Peers for HIV, and it's essentially a program that's been funded by P-HAC, and it's a partnership with the Collaborating Centre for Prison Health and Education at the University of British Columbia and the BC Centre for Disease Control here in BC. And we're working in federal prisons here in BC, there's nine federal prisons for men in BC in this region. So we're going to be working in two of them, and essentially, it's an HIV, Hep C, and STBBI prevention program. So the concept of Program Science actually fit into what we were already intending to do, which is going into prison, working with federally incarcerated men, and training them as peer health ambassadors in HIV prevention and STBBI and Hep C prevention. But the key to this program is that we're working with the prisoners themselves to learn to educate other prisoners. So they will be presenting and conducting prevention activities and education opportunities for other prisoners inside the prison once we train them. And the way that it fits to Program Science is quite nice, because it basically is an evaluation of the effectiveness of this type of education. I started doing prison outreach, and I've been doing prison education since 2000, so I have the fortune to have a fair bit of experience and knowledge locked into my brain as far as education and what works with prisoners and what doesn't. And I designed for Federal Corrections here in 2003, a peer education and counseling training program that was essentially a six-week lecture program. It didn't go over very well, and I fully admit that it's not exactly the best way to educate prisoners inside a federally incarcerated institution. So we're looking at a way of training the prisoners themselves to be the educators, and then go into the population and train other prisoners themselves, and we will support them through that process and all through. About, I think it was about two years ago, we conducted a pilot project of this project to get it funded, and we went into prison and worked with a group of 12 health ambassadors, or what were called peer education counselors at that time, and we were looking at the feasibility of this type of education model, and we asked them, what kind of education would you like to have delivered, and how would you like that delivered to you? And I normally don't disclose my HIV status when I'm working with people, because the training is about them and not about me, but there had been quite a long conversation about stigma and about HIV medication and the accessibility of that in prison. And a couple of the prisoners said, oh, if I ever found out that if I was ever diagnosed with HIV, I would just kill myself and get it over with, because essentially, you're going to die in, you know, six weeks. going to die in, you know, six weeks to six months anyway. So at that point, I disclosed that, you know, well, I'm 63 years old, and I've been living with HIV for 15 years, and I'm not on medication, and I don't look like I'm going to drop tomorrow. So I guess, you know, someone sitting in front of you with HIV and showing that this isn't necessarily a death sentence, made it very real for them, and it further enforced the whole idea that this type of education needs to be relevant to them and needs to be realistic in the sense of something that they can pick up and take and use themselves. So working with these prisoners and sharing stories with them, asking them exactly how they would like to be educated, is really a very novel way of producing education, and it's certainly going to be something that we evaluate, and I'm hoping will be very effective. So thank you very much.
Okay, folks, as you see, there'll be no time for questions, but those of you who woke up and came here very early, we thank you. To those of you who just came after and you're wondering who these people are, these are the people you should be working with, those of you who are students and will be working in the future, these are the peoples you should be coming and asking questions. So I behoove you to ask questions about how do you include the patient, the person with HIV, in my research study? Doesn't matter if you're a graduate student or an undergraduate student or a famous researcher, these are the people you should be talking with, and we thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you, Carr, thanks to the other funders, thanks to all of you. Make yourself available, please, and I'm sorry we didn't have a chance for questions, but the questions are there, and we're going to continue. The patient will take over. Bye, thank you.